It's 5:30. I'll call our committee meeting, council committee meeting to order. And we have three committee hearings, or meetings tonight, and we have a short council meeting. Well, I said short council. I hope it's sort of, council may have to us. All right. First thing, I turn it over to Darrell Cook, Development Services Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, for the Development Services Committee, we've got a historic overlay district ordinance that puts in place, frankly, this historical overlay zone over an area that anticipated to be downtown. This is the first step. Mind you, it is, this is not a process that's going to be particularly short. It is a process that if we go by the scheduling on this, which we have to, in order to meet the state statutes and all, that tonight's meeting, if we take action tonight, it goes to the P and Z for hearings, because this is a zoning issue. And after the P and Z, then it has a hearing, and they vote. Then it comes back to the city council. And it comes back with a recommendation or no recommendation or whatever. That would be on November the 5th. If the council adopts that then, they will also adopt the guidelines, which we'll talk about tonight. And then the wood also name the members of the commission, because after approval of the ordinance, then the commission can be appointed. Then the commission has to have hearings, and notices have to be sent, just like you within a zone. And so somewhere around the 21st of November. Then, once the commission completes their work with the hearing, and they take action on this, then it comes back to the city council again. And the city council then holds a hearing. And then takes a vote. Sometime, that should be sometime between November 21st and December the 3rd, thereabouts. Okay? So, this council will probably, I mean, if it is, if it goes through the process like we expected, or like we would hope, you're going to see it'll leave three terms. So, and it'll leave whatever the council decides at that point. You have in front of you ordinance. And this has been a long process getting here. I'm going to, there will be several people that will talk to it. One, Rita, if you would step up, and I think you have to give your name and address. And can you, you're standing, you're coming from the standpoint of chairman of the Main Street Program, of the Main Street Board. And this originated in the Main Street Board. But since it is a zoning issue, that's why it is being heard in Development Services.
Thank you. My name is Rita Cook. I'm here, I'm the chairman of the Main Street Board. I kind of want to give you some background about this. It's not been a quick and easy process. I would say about 15 months ago, the Main Street Board went to Mineral Wells, and we looked around, we took a busload of people up there, and we liked what we saw. We were excited about the things that they were doing. And so, we invited Cody, and I can't remember her last name, maybe some of you can. She was, I don't know if she was with the Main Street Board, or she was with the city. But we had her come down and talk to our board. And while she was there, she said, "The biggest mistake that they made was that they didn't get a historical overlay district in place before they began." Because she said, "What happened," and I don't know if you've been to Mineral Wells and seen all of the different things they're doing with their buildings down there, "they didn't have it in place, and they had a group come in and build something that was not attractive in the downtown area." And she said, "One of the things you need to do is put this in place." So after she left, there was a lot of discussion about it. We, we kind of, things funneled up, the pipeline, and then the mayor came to us and said, "If, if this is going to happen, it's going to be real important that it's something that's appealing to the people in our community, and something that they want to do." So, he sort of tasked the Main Street Board to put together some sort of guidelines for this to happen. And I'm not sure whether I want to thank him or not. It's been a 15-month process. We're on about the sixth or seventh draft that we've done of this. First, we did an ordinance. And in that process, we invited a lot of different people in. We invited business owners. We invited property owners. We had lots of different people representing the community to help us in putting that information together. So we did an ordinance first, and we really thought that that would suffice. But the ordinance couldn't stand alone. It had to have some guidelines. So then we went back, and we started developing guidelines. So tonight, you will see before you the final results, or they're probably not final, because I'm sure you'll want to make some changes and make some decisions about boundaries and things like that. But tonight, you see before you what we are ready to bring to you as far as an ordinance. And I have to thank Steve Killian and Randy Thomas for their work on this. And then some guidelines that we feel mesh with the ordinance. So, that's where we are.
Thank you. That gives, we felt like a little background information might be worthwhile to say that this wasn't, it's a, it's a long process to put together something like this that we haven't had before. There, the ordinance in front of you, basically, as we said, if we, it establishes the, it establishes the Preservation Commission, the Historic Downtown Preservation. The, you have to have the ordinance in place before you do anything else, including guidelines and whatnot. We can, and including the boundaries of this entire thing. You also have in front of you some maps. And that shows the different, the different types of donations that are in existence in downtown right now. And I want to thank the staff for doing that, too, and putting that together for us. There's a historic downtown district right now. It's part of the Register, Department of Interior designation. There is a Main Street District designation. There is a proposed central downtown district. It's, and, see, the tourist district downtown, too. And anyway, so, this is kind of where we're, where we're at on this deal. I'd like to ask Steve if you would come forward and talk a little bit about how the process must go. And what you've had to go through on this.
It's been a, it's been a interesting challenge over the past few weeks, trying to get this to a point where we felt it was ready to come to council. Rita Cook and her team that she had assembled did a great job putting a base model together for us. And when we started reading it, Randy Thomas and I, we found some things there that we wanted to try to just tighten up a little bit, to make it to where if it is approved by council, it's something that staff can be successful in enforcing. So we made some changes along the way, talked to some other stakeholders in the community through the, through Ms. Cook and some others involved. And so, this is the, the, as mentioned, it's by far maybe not the final product that you, you'll want before you, but it's something that we can bring to you tonight and consider. So as far as the process, Councilman Cook touched on that earlier. The statute's only a few years old that gives us the authority to establish this historic downtown district. And it's confusing. And there's multiple ways to interpret it. And we've done our best to try to make sure that we're adhering to the process. Mr. Thomas checked with some legal counsel through TML. I have a contact down at TML as well. We both reached out at the same time without knowing we were doing so. And we got some direction that basically, it's new. It hasn't been challenged. There's not any, any real defined process. But what we put before you is the timeline that he mentioned. It's basically that the ordinance will be passed. It has to go to P and Z first, that's October 16th, back to council. If it's approved, then the HPC will meet. Once they're assigned, HPC will give every property owner in the district the opportunity to come and be heard, if they want to be included in that district or not. If they don't want to be included in that district, it can be overturned by the HPC by 75% vote. Then it has to come to council. We have to have another public hearing. Those same owners have the right to, again, protests being included. If you, if the council wants them included, it, again, takes 75% of the governing body to make sure that, to have them included in that district. So it's a, we tried to find a way to, to speed up the process, if possible. There simply wasn't one based on the input we received from TML and what we believe the, the statute actually requires. So that's where we are. If you have any specific questions on the ordinance, I can, I'll sure try to answer those for you. It's, it's taken a try, or a village to get here. So I don't proclaim to be the expert on this, but I've sat through enough meetings and read it plenty of times, and, and tried to participate in the revisions along the way. But it's taken a lot of people to get here. So if you have any questions, we'd be glad to try to answer those. It's, I know a pretty, pretty extensive document as far as what's included and what the guidelines also reference. The ordinance does reference the guidelines. The guidelines would be adopted as policy by the city council. And the ordinance references those guidelines as the governing document for the Preservation Committee, or Commission. So, we'd be glad to answer your questions. Thank you.
I have one question. So, if they go to the, to the first board, and 75% votes yes or no, it's going to come to council either way, just like P and Z, just like?
Yes, ma'am. And that's required by the statute.
Right, okay. I want to make sure that that's...
But if I'm not mistaken, if the first board does not get a 75%, that's it.
That's it. That, you're absolutely correct.
Because if the statute requires vote.
The statute requires both, both bodies.
For the public to understand that it doesn't...
That is correct.
So if 75% votes no, it's no, there's no, or votes yes?
Or, let me, let me try to help here. If the HPC has someone protest, and the HPC, five people, if they only have two votes that say, "We want you in the district," they don't get the 75%. So that person is not in the district. Because it takes, to Mr. King's point, it takes not only the HPC, but the city council, both have to approve at 75%. So, either one, if HPC doesn't get the 75%, or the city council doesn't get the 75%, then the protesting party is not included in the district. That's absolutely correct.
Okay. I just want to make it perfectly clear that if, what would make it come to city council? Because you just said if it's...
Well, you're, right now, you're simply talking about whether you're in the district or not. Now, if you want to talk about certificate of appropriateness in order to change your building, that's its own process, and you really haven't described it.
That is correct. Yes.
No, I just mean the, the, if you go in front and you get the 75% or you don't get the 75%, what moves it to council?
If it receives 75% to override the protest, then it would come to council.
I want to make that perfectly clear.
Then, once the ordinance is established, very important point here, a certificate of appropriateness, that process is only handled by the HPC. Doesn't go to city council. If the HPC approves a certificate of appropriateness, so in other words, someone applies, they want to make some changes to the exterior facade of a building facing the street, they apply for certificate of appropriateness. It goes to the HPC. The HPC approves or denies. And then if they approve it, then that person brings that certificate to City Hall Building Inspection, and that's how they get their building permit. If it's denied, there is an appeal process, and that appeal process would bring that, that applicant to the city council. But only upon appeal, and, and only when denied, would it be necessary.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was out there.
Just so we're all perfectly clear. What we're talking about here with the ordinance is something that puts that in place. It puts the ability to move forward in place. Because the next step is the hearings and the going to P and Z. Then it's still got to come back here. It does not require a 75% vote from P and Z to come back here. It's a simple majority vote, because this is talking about either they're going to agree with the, you know, change in the zoning deal or not. And so, either way, it's going to come back here at the next council meeting to be considered for, for this council to, to vote or run one way or the other. That's the establishment of the, of the...
The council has the last say.
The council always has the last say.
Probably to put it in some different words, what you're considering tonight, moving forward, is how to run the district.
Right.
So what would have to happen? If somebody in it, establishing the geographical district is a separate process that'll move on its own timeline. And that's why you have maps in front of you, so you all can discuss what that might be. But that's its own thing, and that's what we were talking about, the inclusion or exclusion of a property once you want geographical boundaries. What you're looking at tonight is simply how it's going to be managed once you create one. That's kind of two separate pieces of it.
Yes, it is. Okay?
I've got a question.
Okay.
So this Historic Preservation Commission, who points them? Is that something that...
City council.
That nominations would take care of?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
Answer's yes.
That's fine. I mean, I was just curious how we were getting this governing body. And then, so I read through this. I had lots of notes, and you have already answered a few of them already. So if you look at this, it says that we can't change if it's already established. It's like, this first financial drive-through, they, this states that if they didn't want that to be a drive-through anymore, that we either have to take it as is, as a drive-through, or it would, I mean, it would have to remain a bank drive-through because it was in a historic district. Is that correct?
Or receive a certificate of appropriateness for the changes to the facade, is, is my understanding of how it would work. Yes, ma'am. So basically, the, the existing building is being protected in its current state. And any, any modification to the exterior would have to be approved through that, that HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission.
In other words, you can't go in and tell somebody that's already in existence that they've got to go change the building. That's, that's not what we're talking about here. Talking about that if you've got an existing building, and it's, and it's purchased by somebody, or the owner of that building wants to go in and, and do major modifications to the exterior of the building, then it would kick in and you'd have to get a certificate of appropriateness from the HPC. That's how that would work. And it affects, and the way this is writ, it affects only the exterior of the building, not the interiors, or anything like that. It affects only the exterior of the building that are straight-facing. Or anything like that. It affects only the exterior of the building that are straight facing. Okay? And the whole thing is meant to. Maintain or keep the historic character of the downtown area.
So if I may add, there's.
Architectural look, the historic character in the downtown area.
Make sure I answered your question correctly. This ordinance does not give us the power to go and force a change of an existing building to look like. Something different than what it is now. It's only for actions in the future that if someone wants to modify a building. Then they have to get that certificate of appropriateness before they're allowed to, to move forward with that.
I just think this is making it a little bit harder for people to come downtown or want to come downtown, but I understand why we are working in this direction. That's just, I just want to say that out loud.
Yes ma'am.
I think one of the critical things here too is, is the timeline. You're going to see some dates and, and things like that in here. Time within forty-five days and within thirty days and all that kind of stuff. In looking at this, and Jason, you can correct me if I'm wrong, in looking at this, from the time somebody. If this is approved, if by the time somebody would apply for a certificate of appropriateness. Okay, if they had to, until they could be, until that could be received is seven days or so.
That's the intent, is that?
That is the intent, is to not slow things down. That's, that's the, it is rather to. To keep things moving rather than being hindrance. And that's also the way that this thing is.
If I may, is to make sure that we are being fully transparent in what's before you. This document, the ordinance, does reference the guidelines. And in the guidelines is a vacant building process. So if there's a building on the square that's vacant. Being used for storage or different, different scenarios listed in the, in the guidelines, then there's actually a requirement that that be registered. With the city. They carry one hundred thousand dollars in liability insurance. And if they don't register with the city, within ninety days after becoming vacant, there is a penalty clause. Which will be defined by the fee schedule adopted by the city council every year. So just so you know that that's included in the, in the guidelines is one of the components of the H P C. Want to make sure that, that everyone's aware of that. Before we ask you to move forward with this.
I have a question about that. I'm sorry, please.
Go ahead.
Question.
Okay, so they registered the building, there's no fine?
Correct.
Correct. But what about the ones that have been used for storage for ten, fifteen, twenty years? They've registered it, but yet we're still not giving them any, there's no penalty to, to do anything with it.
To continue.
To continue to do anything other than keeping it. I mean, our most historical building on the square was a storage building for over twenty years. It's not going to be anymore. But it was, and so.
So I, I see where.
What would it take to add a financial penalty? That if it's not, you know, we've registered it every year possibly, and then. The second year after being registered, if it's still vacant or still a storage building, why can we not accept?
So the guidelines will be adopted by city council and they're not necessarily subject to the same process that we outlined for this ordinance being passed. So. I think that would be as simple as getting those guidelines on the agenda for council action and we can modify those guidelines by adoption of the policy.
So we can't do it at this point?
I think absolutely.
I mean, instead of voting it on council and then having to change it later, can we not?
Well, but no, it's, it's an agenda item tonight. I mean, if it's coming through the committee, you would need to have a committee recommendation. But to answer your question, a simple majority of the city council to write it however you want to write it.
That's right.
I just hate to.
How much would you like to be the majority of your committee?
Well, how much, I, I mean, I had a conversation with somebody who owns multiple properties downtown yesterday and. We threw a number around that a lot of people might not like, but at least it would put a dent in something. You know, a five hundred dollar fine, that's not, that's not much. You put. Three thousand, five thousand dollars on there, there's some.
Motivation.
Motivation to, to do something.
Incentive.
Incent, exactly. So, you know, I mean, that's.
Right now, as written, I think the only incentive that we could actually refer to would be the requirement of that insurance policy. Every year for the liability of a vacant building. So not necessarily a fee structure associated with that if they register within the ninety days.
I just think that that's something that.
There's a fee structure with regard to the registration.
Yes sir.
Which was.
And that has to be set by this council in the regular fees process.
So I believe that'd be a, an easy revision to the guidelines. Just add a penalty in there for. You know, whatever duration you would want that to, if it's a per month or per day or however you want to do that and whatever that would be on the. We would just include that in the fee schedule. As modification to the fee schedule to include that once this is adopted.
You're saying we don't have to modify this agreement because it's already set that we're going by the fee schedule? And you're saying that you put in kind of a, a figure like that in that fee schedule?
I think we'd have to add a clause that says there is a penalty for a vacant building that's remains vacant more than X number of days.
Well, and not just vacant, but that's being used as a storage building. I mean, I.
Yes ma'am, and that's, I think the definition includes storage as a vacant.
I'm not really.
So how much is the, the fee at this point? I'm sorry.
The fee has not been established, that would be established by city council.
Gerald, could this not, could this not be?
I have a question, when do you finish?
Go ahead.
So what are we saying, I want to make sure this thirty thousand foot level, if I own a store downtown or anywhere in this district. And I'm leasing it to some vendor and that person vacates the building, what happens? Is that called a vacant building now?
By the definition in this, in the guidelines.
So if that's the case and the economy turns south. What's going to happen? Are you going to penalize somebody because they can't lease their building? Or is this intended to make sure people have, are trying to do something to bring business downtown?
As far as I'm concerned, it's for the people that are trying to bring stuff downtown and we have multiple buildings that are. A couple of buildings that are being used as storage that could be used as businesses to bring people downtown.
Okay, so answer my question though. So what is it, what does the ordinance say, the way you've written it right now?
The guidelines include a vacant building registration.
So I have to register that it's vacant?
And you have ninety days to do that.
And then what?
The only, I guess, penalty or disincentive to continue the, the vacancy would be the cost of that insurance policy. Yes sir.
So if you rent it in that ninety days, then there is no, there's not, you don't have to register.
Well, I understand that. My question though comes back to is we look at the shopping center, it's not in the district, but let's say Washington Commons or, you know. University, whatever it's called out there. If they lose a store, somebody moves away, Charleston loses two thousand students and they can't lease their building back. What are we doing? Are we penalizing that business because, other than that hundred thousand dollar, I mean, I understand the policy, that's just for liability reasons, but. Are we going to penalize a company who can't because of the economy lease a property? Sounds like it. If we add a financial penalty, not the way it is now.
Currently not the way, not the way it's written.
I understand.
If the council so chooses to add that in, then absolutely that would be one of the enforcement provisions of the ordinance itself.
I just have a question, and it's kind of like what Lee Anne's saying, is we don't want it to be a storage building, but what gives us the power to dictate what they do with their property?
The, the, so to be fair, to answer the mayor's scenario. I don't know legally that we ever could do something like that at the shopping center. You would be allowed to do that under this because the state law allows you to lay down this specific district. So make no mistake, you are regulating, if you do this, you're, we're regulating everything in a different fashion than we do anywhere else.
The shopping center is the example. I mean, because the economy turns down, that's one of the first ones going to go is all retail. Downtown is a little bit different because people, it's more family owned, et cetera, but it may not be at some point. And so I just want to make sure that we understand that we put a penalty to it. If something happens and I can't lease that building. That we're going to try to penalize them if we add this change to the ordinance.
The reason this was written as it is, which is a registration and it's in the guidelines. Was to take the soft approach, if you would, with regard to these buildings, saying. We recognize as a city that this is, these could be a problem. They need to be registered because it is a, could be a, I mean, if you have a fire downtown in one of the buildings. It's right next to one of the other buildings, it's going to affect it.
Well, I don't have an issue with the insurance issue.
So, so that was the idea behind the insurance thing. The other thing is, some of the buildings are open, you don't want to have derelicts coming in and all the other kind of stuff. It can be a hazard. But mainly, I think, it's to put you on notice that hmm, you need to, you need to really come up with a plan of how you're going to do the building. If you're the owner of the building, you need to come up with a plan and the city needs to know that. Okay? It's not trying to tell them what they can put in or how they're supposed to do it. It's meant to. Encourage them to use the building. And, and, and so, without being punitive. Now that, we saw some cities looking at. Others, I mean, I've Googled them, you guys can Google them too, and they're all over the place. And, and Lee Anne has gone to a National Main Street thing and they were really touting. The idea of making it a, a, a fine and all that kind of stuff if the buildings were vacant. I've seen cer- certain cities too that, you know, gee whiz, half the buildings are vacant. We don't have that situation here. But the idea behind it, like I said, was to start off with the registration. It does have a fee base on it. It requires certain things to be done. And then if it doesn't work, this council can always adopt an ordinance with regard to vacant buildings if it chooses to do so in the future. And that would be a follow-up. And this, we'll see how this goes. And then we can just make a decision in the future if you want to make it more punitive.
And to respond to what you said, Mayor, maybe we, maybe there's a, a situation where if that happens, because we all know things in the world happen. Then maybe there is a, a way that they can come to the committee and show that there is.
Economic hardship.
Yes, hardship situation. And in that case, then, then there is stipulations for that. But there are some that are just full of stuff and sitting and that. I think we need to address that. Like Gerald mentioned, we, at the Main Street, National Main Street Conference. I can't even tell you how many cities discussed this very thing on how they grew their main street and. How they continued to bring people to downtown was to make sure that there were businesses that were open. And that when they looked in the window, it wasn't just had been sitting for ten years. So. I think I'm the first to say, I hate the thought of telling somebody what they can do when they've spent money on a building. But if we want to grow our main street and make it what we have tried to do, as long as, for sure as long as I've been on here, three and a half years. I think it is a, something that we're going to have to deal with of the buildings that are in this district that have become storage buildings.
Well, I don't have a problem with the issue of some kind of an exception for hardship, but here's what I've heard in the past on other situations. Let's say we have a multi-billion dollar business that buys a building downtown and they can't lease it. But you say, well, they're billionaires. There's no hardship to them. They all spend the money. Well, wait a minute, no, it's, it's a business. That, that's a business standing there by itself in that building. Can you, are you going to try to bring in his billion dollar assets and say that he didn't have hardship? He'll be able to spend the money? That, that's my concern is that what is a hardship is real subjective. The question is, if I'm leased, if I only lease it for ten thousand dollars a month and it didn't worth three, you will, it's going to sit vacant. I can understand something like that. But to me, to penalize somebody because of something beyond their control. And we had that happen, but during COVID, we had it happen during the real estate crash. What was it? What year was that?
Which time?
Yeah, which time?
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight, et cetera. And also, what are you going to do when a building goes dark? And that you can't get anybody to fill the building. So I understand the ordinance, I understand the incentive, I understand the registration, I understand the insurance. My question is, we start doing penalties, I'd rather us look at that in more depth later. If we're going to consider the ordinance, consider that. I mean, I'm saying I'm opposed to it completely. I'm just opposed to not considering all the options. Because I know, I know situations here in town where people wanted to develop, we wanted someone to do something. And we told them, you have enough money to do that, but the project itself wouldn't pay for it. And so we ended up telling them, well, you got to do it. And they say, you've got enough money to do it. It didn't matter right to tell them how to spend their money. That's, that's my concern. And I understand the law allows it.
No, well, what I wanted to clear up was typically, and, and I don't think this would be any different. Once a fine or a fee is assessed and somebody doesn't want to pay it, that doesn't come here. That becomes a judicial process in the city and it only goes before the municipal court. So that whole, if they come, explain to the committee, I don't. I don't, I don't think that would be an option.
You're right, but let me back up a little bit. The initial part of it, when it's assessed, that will come in from the court. When the, when the fine is assessed.
Correct.
That, that's when it starts.
Right, right.
So if we. So I think we're going the direction of maybe establishing a penalty clause that's enforceable through, say, a municipal court charge. If it remains vacant over a certain amount of time.
Well, I think maybe the mayor's on to something. We're not going to take a big bite all at once.
Are there any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. If I don't, I'm not on the committee, but if you don't mind, am I good?
Okay.
Have the property owners in the potential district been notified that we're trying to get a, basically a district to govern what they can do with their buildings?
The committee and I believe Mr. King have had some discussions with some of the, the property owners downtown.
But not all of them.
But not, not all of them.
Mr. Bassett, if you look at the maps in front of you, we have no idea what the district is.
Right, no, I, I, that's why I said potential. I said potential.
The answer to your question is no. We've primarily worked with two multiple building owners. One that owns four or five, another that owns nine, I think. Are kind of the two that we've worked with to help kind of draft the wording for tonight. But before we kind of decided to go knock on doors. We thought you guys might want to give some direction on scope and size of what you're looking at.
Okay.
Before we did that. So.
My, my second question, this is just a hypothetical, I guess. Say one of these buildings over here with a glass door. Somebody comes out of the bar and breaks their glass door. There's no insurance claim, there's no, there's no anything like that. Are they to replace their door with an historic door or?
It, it says in the guidelines, and we haven't really gone through the guidelines with, with everyone, but it says in the guidelines, no, they may replace. That's just a standard maintenance type thing. Somebody breaks a plate glass window. We had a car go through a wall down here.
Couple times.
And, yeah, and I think it was Brandon Huckabee's office actually. But anyway, they, and those things are standard maintenance. And, and, and everything, replacement of doors and things like that, that just happens. Now, you're talking about, and that's specifically mentioned with regard to doors and windows.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alan, did you say you had something?
I, I do. I'm not on the committee if I might, Mr. Chair. I've, I've looked at this. I, I want to thank you and Rita for the amount of work that you put in because I know that you have put an extremely large amount of time in on this. because I know that you have put an extremely large amount of time in on this. My first impulse is that we're bordering on government overreach. Because when you start telling somebody specifically, not, not zoning issues, but this is more aesthetics. That's all it is, if I'm understanding it right, it's the aesthetics of the exterior of the building that's going to show from street side. And, you know, that, I'm, I question in my mind whether that's actually government's role or not. I don't know that it's necessarily wrong, but it's something that we need to be very, very cautious about. And if we elect to go down that road, the first thing I think we need to do is establish what our district is going to be. This is the first time I've seen any of these maps. Now, y'all may have had these drawn for some time, but this is my first look at them. Once we establish that district, we need to knock every door, every property owner in that district for input. Before we pass an ordinance, before we do anything else, we need to know what they think about what we're doing, because they're the ones whose pockets we're getting in on this.
Actually, all of them are required to be notified for the hearings. So everyone is going to, everyone that would be in a, the area would have the opportunity to express how they feel about it, whether they want in or out of it. Uh, and, uh, and they, they get a, they get a chance to do that before the, before the, uh, Preservation Commission, the Historic Downtown Commission. They get a chance to do it before them and before the city council. So, I mean, uh, so they're not going to be, nothing's going to be passed until you have all that done.
Well, and.
And I understand what you're saying there too.
That's not the scenario that's been laid out tonight.
Well, it's what's in the ordinance.
The ordinance would be passed. The ordinance would be passed, uh, assuming it's adopted, that would occur on this timeline, the first meeting in November. And then the subsequent meeting on November 21st of the HPC would establish a district. And then it would also allow for the hearing process and people to protest being included. They would have to override that by 75%.
Do you have to have the ordinance in place first before you can do those things?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you do.
Okay. And see, to me, you're talk, you're talking about the cart and the horse here.
Well, it's still, this is the way you've got to do it.
It's the.
I mean, we've gone over the state statutes a jillion times, this is the way you've got to do it.
Well.
So.
The state, it never makes a mistake, right?
Yeah, well, I'm, you know, I'm not going to challenge them either.
Well, I'm not saying we ought to challenge them, but I, I'm just not sure it's wise for us as council members to, number one, to dictate what somebody does with the, with their building to this level. But if we elect to do that, and I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying if we do elect to do that, then those people should be the first ones informed before we pass ordinances, before we do anything else. And I can't see how an ordinance would prohibit, I can't see how state statute would prohibit us from contacting these people and telling them that this is what we're considering, we're not taking official action on it. We've not even established the district yet. And, and we're already passing the ordinances that have teeth, a- and I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that. Mr. Nix, to, to address your concern, I don't think there's anything that prevents us from even the passage of this. If you guys told us, hey, we think we want to concentrate in this area, I, I think we could notify them like we would under the, the, the piece where we have to notify them. I don't think there's anything that prevents us from going and knocking on doors, saying, hey, on this date, P and Z is going to consider adopting this ordinance and these guidelines, and on this date, council is. So I, I think we could meet your concern without any undue burden on staff.
I think it's a great idea.
We're pretty used to sending out notices.
And I think you can too.
I would feel much better if that's what we were going to do and not only the, the property owners in this, but I would want to include that 200-foot radius that we do for a zoning change or anything like that. Because it may not impact me directly, but if it's across the street from me, it may impact my business adversely. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything that prevents us from doing it. We could, you know, go a little above and beyond without.
So staff can, we can instruct staff to do that.
Sure. Yes, absolutely.
Two, 200-foot radius?
Yes.
Um, I actually believe we got direction, Mr. Thomas got direction today that we have to give the 200.
On the adoption of the geographical boundaries.
On the boundary, yes.
We're talking about the adoption of the guidelines and the controlling ordinance, doing it anyway. You comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
We have to give normal notice on passing this ordinance for the city council meeting, just like we do any other amendment of the code ordinances, which requires all the things that you're saying.
It does.
Does it require just a publication or a posting of the notice? Or does it require specifically addressing and contacting property owners?
In this case.
Because it's not the same thing. We don't have geographical boundaries.
This specifically, the ordinance, Alan, has to go for planning and zoning from this committee. Then, not to the full council, we're not talking to vote for the council. From the committee, it goes to planning and zoning. And they're going to conduct the hearing with regard to this. And then they're going to send it back to us.
But you still didn't answer my question, do they send specific notices to each property? No.
No.
We've cleared that up. But if, again, if you guys, as we go through this discussion, give us kind of which map you think fits better for where you're headed, then.
I'd pick the biggest map, but the, largest potential inclusion. Yeah, absolutely.
That's what you normally do when we pass an amendment.
So I can instruct staff to do that?
That's what they're.
Yes.
Okay, so instructed.
Reservation before you get.
I think I've got to say a letter.
So instructed. Well, I want, I want two things. Several years ago, a good friend of mine was Mayor Granberry. As he was David Southern deceased the last, about three years ago, two years ago. I visited with him, he had a friend of mine back in college, and I asked him, I said, tell me about Granberry. Why is Granberry such a success downtown? And he said, because it's historical. He made a big deal about that. And I said, well, what's, what is, on city council, what would you suggest I do? And he said, the number one thing you need to do is take downtown and make it special. He said, you have the potential of the most beautiful downtown in the area. And so I 100% agree with doing something to make downtown something that's special for Steenville, Texas. And, um, we have some other incentives, we talked about incentives that day. There's some opportunities for incentives, because one of the reasons we're making it historical is for tourism. There's a potential to use tourism funds to do some incentives, there may be a business who can't do something. And yet they, we want them to, you force some guy that doesn't have the money or some lady that doesn't have the money, there's ways for us to help them do that. And what yours, if I understand Gerald, what you're saying is all that can be discussed later in the ordinance. We can go a whole lot more detailed about those sorts of things. All we're doing tonight, you're recommending, or your committee is considering, is establishing, make sure you say it right. How would you do, establishing the proc, you said a minute ago.
The process.
Um, establishing the process, there, there's no final about this, there's about six more opportunities to deal with this issue, right?
Yes.
Between us and other groups.
Yeah.
And so because of that, as an ad hoc member of all committees, I'm going to make a motion that we pass the ordinance that was brought to us tonight to send toward city council. On what date did you say?
So Mayor, if I may, uh, this ordinance, because it's a land use, uh, ordinance, does have to go to P and Z for public hearing and then back to city council for a recommendation.
So all we're doing is passing it to send to P and Z. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm in my motion then, Randy?
Yes.
To approve this out of committee to send to P and Z as presented. And we, and a side note will be, we have the opportunity to make changes in everything before it ever gets to be imp- impacted by, to the citizens, is that correct? You have something else you want to say?
So the, the ordinance, if adopted, if we made revisions to it, it would have to go back through that same process, P and Z, back to council. But because it references the guidelines, and the guidelines are established by a policy through the adoption by the city council, we can, we can amend those guidelines through council action at any time.
Including if we want to put a penalty on there, we want to do that, we can put all that stuff later, it doesn't have to be tonight.
The guidelines would not have to go back to P and Z.
So order is passing the guidelines, is that correct?
No, you're, you're pushing both of them forward. He's just telling you, the ordinance has a legal process it has to follow. The guidelines don't necessarily go to P and Z, that stays right here with this body.
Okay, back to my point then, if we want to add penalties or some incentive like that, that's just a guideline issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm making a motion that we do tonight.
In which.
And I say take the biggest map possible.
Yeah.
That's, that's instruction, that's not part of the, that's not part of my motion, that's part of the instructions. Take the biggest possible area. Everybody's involved.
That would be a recommendation.
No.
No, that's, that's my direction to staff.
For, for staff purposes, to notify people for that.
Historic downtown.
Right, use the yellow one.
The biggest, biggest, most inclusive.
Which is the, uh, one that was Department of Interior Registration.
Right.
It would also be the, the, the district that we would recommend that the HPC consider at their first meeting.
No, this, this, for notification purposes.
Okay.
For P and Z and council on this process.
HPC will do your own recommendations at some point, is that correct, Gerald?
Yes.
Okay. So is my motion totally messed up?
No, I'm talking to you.
Okay, thank you. Do a hair second. And we have two newspapers present tonight, one's online, one's present, so we'll have a lot of notifications publicized.
Do I hear a second? Then I'll second it.
Please vote.
Anybody, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll propose to it, sorry.
Okay, it passes 3-1. Take this, uh, uh, be sent to, uh, planning and zoning then for the hearings and then we'll see it back here. Now, you have also historic guidelines in front of you. This is where you get more into the meat of it. Okay? And, and the, uh, guidelines, basically, they talk about what the certificate of appropriateness is and, uh, how it's done, and then how the, uh, HPC, which be the Historic Preservation or Historic District Commission, would operate. Yes, sir.
We, we've already passed on all this, when, when you passed that.
Did you, was that the motion?
Well, it was all one, it's one, it's one of 10 items.
I'm sorry. Then we're, then we're done.
So you got one more item, Lambeau's.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we do.
Steve's got half the meeting tonight.
Yeah, Steve does. The next, the next item we've got has to do, has to do with the, uh, has to do with the number of unrelated persons in a, that can be living in a house, household, in the community. Right now, it stands at three. As you can probably guess, uh, that there's, uh, a, a lot more living in, uh, a lot of the houses around here than three. And so, uh, Steve, you want to talk about the background here just a little bit?
So we've had, uh, some projects come to town and the, the number of occupants in those projects uh, kind of created some concern for the, uh, citizens and adjacent neighbors. And so that kind of brought this to our attention and we looked at this and talked with TML again and consulted with Mr. Thomas. And what we determined through that is that we have many single-family homes that are built with more than three bedrooms, allowing for more than, uh, the number of unrelated occupants that we have in our ordinance. Uh, multiple, multifamily buildings that build four and five unit dwellings. Uh, and we limit this again to three unrelated persons. Now, that doesn't mean that there can't be a family plus three unrelated persons, but when you look at the, the unit itself, um, knowing that we have student housing and units being constructed with more than three bedrooms, we know that there's going to be situations where there are more than three unrelated persons. So what we're proposing is to change that to four. And this, i- in your packet on the staff report, I listed every district that I think this would affect. That's every district that allows any type of residential housing, uh, whether it be single-family or multifamily. And it has to apply to every, every circumstance of living to be, uh, meet the, the requirements of, of, uh, some of the, the case law that we reviewed. So we're, we're asking for it to be increased to four unrelated persons for every district that has, uh, living cor, or living, um, as a single-family, multifamily, uh, townhomes, duplex, any type of housing in that district this would apply to. On those housing units for multifamily where it's a five-bedroom unit or more, there is a mechanism through the Board of Adjustment where the property owner can ask for a variance on that unrelated person. So even though we're capping it at four and we know there are some buildings that have five, uh, dwelling, uh, five bedrooms in the dwelling, there's still a mechanism for them to get to that point if the Board of Adjustment grants a variance. So we're, we're asking for an increase from three to four. This was something that we started looking at many, many months ago and the, the recommendation uh, from one of the, the, uh, TML lawyers that we were speaking with said, three's probably not enough, um, when you're limiting, uh, residency in that regard. So you need to have a number maybe higher than three, but not as high as seven. And so that's, that's where we, uh, decided to try four and be glad to answer any questions on that.
Time in for a minute.
Mike, here.
For me, this came down to two realizations. One, that we have a lot of single-family homes already in the community that are in violation of the current rules. It's almost next to impossible to enforce. But it's kind of, you know, driven or hidden some of these issues. Forces people to try to get around rules, things like that. The other piece of it was talking to developers that are interested in building some new homes that say, hey, with construction cost, interest rates, I kind of, you know, if I'm going to build something that people are going to rent, I've got to figure out how to get, you know, my expenses back out of it. And, and they've asked about looking at that too. And so, again, in discussions with staff and, uh, developers and that, that want to build new stuff and also own current rental properties in town, four feels like it might fit. It's not too many, but it's not as restrictive as currently. And maybe it would bring more of our existing properties into compliance with our rules, because we do get complaints on them. But again, it's very difficult to enforce, both from Steve's and, and Mr. Thomas's as well. So it feels like maybe an adjustment needs to be made to make it function better.
Any comments with regard to the committee?
I mean, I can think of five houses within three blocks of me that are four bedrooms that have people living in it that, with the four, raising it to four makes perfect sense to me.
So with this, uh, if, if this is approved, um, this is a land use regulation ordinance, so it would have to also be assigned to P and C, P and Z, and then they would make a recommendation back to council for, uh, the next city council.
What's the wishes of the committee?
No, I don't, I think, I think that we should move forward with changing them.
And make that into a form of a motion?
I make the motion that we, um, was what I'm looking for here, sorry. We update the regulations, like the occupancy of structures and the security limits.
And move from three to four?
Move from three to four, yes, sir, sorry, second.
We have a motion in a second to update the occupancy, uh, allowances to move from three to four in those housing areas that, uh, have been designated by staff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes, so now it goes to P and Z.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman.
That concludes, aren't you glad?
You say that to him and not, like, or is it you argue with him, you say the same thing and finally? Mr. Nix, hope it works.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we only have one simple item on that. Uh, one of the tools that Mr. Williams uses in his, uh, work to establish what kind of repairs and where we do repairs to the streets is called a pavement condition index. We had that done in 2018.
We had that done in 2018. It's been very useful and it has helped him significantly as we go through the budgetary process, trying to determine which streets need to be repaired and, and what kind of repairs need to be done on these streets. That, having done that in 2018, it needs to be updated. Mr. Gene Calvert, who was a city engineer for the city of Stevieville at, at one time, has offered to his professional services to update that for us, that pavement condition index for us. They will literally go through the streets and drive them and photograph them and analyze them with the specific data that is gathered through that. Based on that, they will update that index. And most of our streets are not going to rate very highly, but it will give us a more in-depth look and a more up-to-date look at that. Mr. Calvert has proposed to do that service for us for a cost of fifty-two thousand nine hundred forty dollars and ten cents. That money was allocated in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The money is still available to do that. If it pleases, the committee will recommend to the council that they go ahead and retain Mr. Calvert to do this work for the city. There is a little bit of a timeline on this because the people who are going to be doing it will be in the state of Texas before the end of this month, I believe, and could go ahead and include that in their work if, if the council elects to authorize that work to be done. Any committee have any questions or comments or, yes, sir?
Nick, will this give us the same rating, type of rating like we had before? Because remember we had, we're applying, asking for some federal funds. And they want to have shovel-ready product, well, near shovel, not, what do you call it? It's a term, Jason, about non, it's not shovel-ready, there's a turner on the shelf, you pull it off, it's ready to go. We apply for grants, money's. And our current one gives like a rating, ABC or whatever.
Well, it, it'll move you closer, but several, if you remember, several of Nick's remaining projects will require engineering.
Well, sure.
So, I mean, it, it moves the needle a little bit, but several of them would still require extensive engineering design. Well, like, I mean, for example, Long Street had a score, a pretty bad score. So that was mentioned in the book, but when we got ready to do it, it took almost a year to get that designed.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I'm saying when we're applying for federal funds or other kind of funding, there was some, as a term we used.
It's certainly a bullet point that we use when we apply for it, that it has scored low on this rating scale. And it's a nationally recognized scale, so.
Okay, it is.
It's exactly what we use in-house to select streets below.
So when we go back to whoever gets elected Senator in November and our current Congressman and asks for money, that's going to help us rank where we have, where the money needs to be spent.
And it's not a new system, Mayor, it, it's really an update of the existing analysis data.
I appreciate that, I just want to make sure that fits that same category.
Yes.
Because that's, because when we sent it to them before, it was like, oh, this is great. And we asked for two-hundred-and-thirty-eight million bucks back then. I won't mess that up.
Would we, did we budget for this?
Yes, it's in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and the, and the funds are still available.
And is this about the amount we budgeted for?
Yes, sir.
Good job, Nick.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve project funding fifty-two thousand nine forty-ten for the update to our pavement condition index.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that, that will go as a positive recommendation to the council then. Mayor, that's all my committee has for this evening.
Thanks, sir, Mr. Basket.
We've got a little bit to talk about here. Monica, or do you want Steve to do it?
You do, you do look pretty comfortable up there, Steve, you might as well just, you know, just keep doing it. So as we get to our year-end, we just have some, basically some cleanup work, so we do year-end adjustments. Kind of makes our auditors happy, I guess, but, so I try to keep these as clean and as simple as possible. And it's just to, to clean up where we might be over budget in a few places. But the first one is for the seniors channel, when y'all approved that, you knew at the time that it was a little bit more than the, I think, one point five million that we had in there. And so, we've added three-hundred-and-forty-three thousand four-hundred-and-thirty dollars to that. We're covering that with interest on investments because we've, we've budgeted like two-hundred thousand and we're over almost seven-hundred thousand in the general fund, so there's plenty to cover it. Also, for the E Ruth County Appraisal District, our contract with them, they usually send us a proposed budget, and then if there's changes, the final budget. I guess we missed getting the, the, the final in there, so that was an additional seventeen thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars. We've covered that with some additional that we had in property tax this year, so it's a net zero as well. For our municipal court, we're increasing our credit card fees by fifteen thousand. We're also covering that in interest on investments. We've been working, trying to be able to, to charge some of those credit card fees to the defendants. But we're not going to be able to probably charge everything to them, but we're, we just started recently, we have an agreement. And so moving forward, some of that will get charged to the defendant, the, what Tyler charges us for the transactions, but the merchant fees will still be on us.
Monica, I'm sorry to interrupt, I know you're on a roll here, but I did, I know when we talked about that yesterday, I, I thought about it more. And so is there no way that, I mean, do we not see an avenue where we can charge the full fee? Because I would think we.
Let me check on that, but the, the last time we checked into it, and it's the same thing for the utility billing, we want to encourage people to, to do it electronic because when we make it easy on them, they, they take care of things. So, um, they're.
And I guess it's cheaper than a bounced check too, but.
Well, we don't take checks in court unless they're like a cashier's check or a money order, but.
I think we need to figure a way out of charging them for the full amount.
I can look into it again, we, so there's two fees that we have. One of them is the transaction fees that Tyler charges us for having the portal where they can do some of it electronic. And then the other part is what Visa, MasterCard charges for their fees. And I'll, I'll have to check into it and see. There, there's a potential that we could add an extra percentage or something onto it, but.
Okay, thank you.
We just haven't pursued that because we've been trying to get the revenues up and getting people to pay. And, and so when you make it easy, they take care of it. The, on the prosecutor contract, we've been really busy at municipal court, so I thought that was going to go over just a little bit. We're able to cover that from some of the outside professional fees in the legal department that haven't been used. In the Parks and Rec Department, the consulting project for the sports facility was fifteen thousand. We were able to cover, cover that from some part-time wages savings. Darren come up with a new idea on tournament expenditures. So we have additional tournament revenue, some additional revenue in our youth program activities. But we also have some additional expenses in the contract services youth and our tournament expenditures because we're, things that we used to do internal, we've contracted with, so we're making a little bit more money. But we covered some of that with where we're not paying part-time people to do it. For, in the, also in the Parks and Rec, we adjusted the, the loan interest and principal. We had the numbers off just a little bit, so it's an in and out, net wash. For our fire department overtime, the Tifmas deployments, we don't budget for those, but we, you know, we have deployment expenses and overtime, but we get all that reimbursed. So we were able to cover the additional overtime and the deployment cost with the, the Tifma grant, Tifmas grant money. Also in the fire department, they purchased some equipment that was part donation, part grant. So we were able to cover it with the donation line item and the grant line item. We had to replace in the police department a server, and then we had some additional cost on the radio system. So we were able to cover that with interest on investments and also some office equipment maintenance where we thought we were going to pay some stuff on the radio system, but we were able to, to use it for the, for the actual, instead of maintenance, for the actual capital. In the five-thirty-six well field, we have a, a, a little bit overage on that for almost fifteen thousand. We always budget an oversized participation line item in our admin, so that wasn't used this year. We didn't have a need for it, so we covered the costs on the five-thirty-six well field with that. We also had in our collections department, some machinery maintenance costs. And of course, you never know what's going to break when it does, so we, that was about fifty thousand. And we're covering that with the oversized participation as well. In the utilities department, we're increasing the credit card fees there, and we're covering that with the interest on investments. Remember on that one, those fees are in our rate structure. So we treat ourselves like Walmart. When you go to Walmart, you know, it's not so much if you pay cash and so much pay card, it's the same fee, whatever. So when we do our rate structure, we include those credit card fees. And it's going up because more and more people are using their, their electronic. I don't think we're quite at the point where we've hit that tipping scale that, you know, it's predominantly card. We still have a lot of check payment and cash payments that come in. In our.
I still pay the check.
She likes to cash my checks.
I have a few people that told me that once we stopped charging the credit card fee, that they would start using their credit card, and they still do the check, so whatever. You're one of those?
Yeah.
Alan, sorry, I have to check at the grocery store, don't worry about it.
That's Jan. He didn't go grocery shopping, Jan takes care of it. I'm sorry, Monica, I had to.
Also in the water department, we had some bank charges, their agency fees that, for the debt that we have. That was a little bit more than we anticipated. And then our franchise fee, which is based on a percentage of our collections, the more we bill, and so it's based on billing, we're having a little bit more billing this year than, than what we had budgeted. So we're covering those with interest on investments as well. Then in the landfill, once again, that we had the interest and principal off a little bit, so we're just moving from one to the other to correct that. In our landfill again, the machinery maintenance, we increased that. And because we sold a piece of equipment this year, that covered it by fifty thousand dollars. And then in the airport, for our ramp grant, we'd originally only budgeted ten thousand for that. I think the grant was for a hundred thousand. So we, we've had an additional fifteen thousand eight hundred in building maintenance and fifty-four thousand six hundred forty-seven in airport maintenance. And the seventy thousand four forty-seven additional grant proceeds is covering that. In our stormwater drainage, our development reviews, I increased those by fifty thousand based on what we spent so far and what I anticipate. And we're covering that with the interest on investments. We do get those reimbursed, it's just, it's at the end of the, when the final review is done. And so sometimes we have to foot the bill until it, we get the final review and then we bill it out. For our TIF one C, y'all had approved a developer agreement. And I thought I corrected this amount, but it's supposed to be four thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. I don't know if that's what's in your copy, but anyways, so we're covering that with interest on the, on investments in that fund. That's it, and it's all on that zero, so it's just increasing a revenue or reducing another expense to, to cover everything just to kind of clean some stuff up before the end of the year.
Any questions for Monica?
I just have one question, and so on the, the court fees that you were talking about, and is there a way, and I don't have any idea, is there a way to raise what they're supposed to be paying? I mean, if it's a fifty-dollar fine, is there a way to raise that to fifty-five dollars or whatever that would cover those fees?
That's solely in the discretion of the municipal judge.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cook, any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Park?
As usual, Monica's done a masterful job for him.
I know these year-end budget adjustments are always fun, so I appreciate you doing that. It's a pleasure of the committee.
I move we approve the budget amendments as presented.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? That conclude, that will move on to council for approval, and that concludes the Finance Committee, Mr. Mayor.
It is six forty-five, we'll close our council committee meeting and, excuse me, and open our special city council meeting, and that is at six forty-five. And without a turnover, Mr. Nix.
Mayor, the committee brings a positive recommendation on hiring the services of Mr. Eugene Calvert to update our pavement condition index for the city of Stevieville. He has proposed to do this for fifty-two thousand nine hundred forty dollars and ten cents. The money was budgeted in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, it is still available for this service. He proposes to complete this work within approximately ninety days. The committee had a recommendation, a positive recommendation to the council, and I would make the motion to approve that expenditure for the services of Mr. Calvert to update our pavement condition index.
Sorry, no.
And a motion, a second discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is that all you have?
That's all I've got, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Nix, next time, Mr. Basket.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee met about two and a half minutes ago. Monica, can you go back through all the budget adjustments that, no, okay. We, we did vote to bring this to full council with positive recommendation. With that, I will make that into a motion. I'll make the motion that we approve the budget amendments for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four as presented.
The motion is second, and is that, do we have to say ordinance number on this one?
Yes, sir.
Supposed to.
That would be ordinance, no, I would amend my motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero dash twenty-four, is that right?
I'll second that again.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have to go through that whole thing again, Randy, or is it, can we consider friendly? He said he made his own amendment. Okay, I have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, next item. We have, we're going to, I guess it's going to be Monica?
I'll handle it.
You'll handle it, okay. So we're going to enter into a public hearing at six forty-seven to consider the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I'll turn it over to City Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council. As you know, everybody's kind of worked hard since the beginning of the summer to get to the point that we are tonight for next year's fiscal budget. All the staff, and then I know I've occupied a lot of y'all's time over the summer.
Yes, you have.
Couple of off-site meetings and then some different budget hearings. And so, if you'll recall from our discussions and budget, salaries are increasing in the proposed budget by one-point-one million dollars in, in the general fund next year. And then that kind of created a cascading effect with available funds on some different things. So the original discussion that we had, I had cut out almost everything else that had been proposed by the department directors. So we've had a discussion about after tonight, kind of changing the way we want to look at funding major street repair projects and things like that. And so beyond today, I'll end up bringing more information back to council for consideration in, in that area. But by doing that, we took the policy of eight percent of general fund property tax revenue and general fund sales tax revenue and have re-appropriated some of that back into the operational budget. And so if you look at the information provided to you tonight, Monica's put together a kind of a great cover letter that details some of the things I've re-appropriated back into the proposed budget that had been brought to me by department directors. And the first one of that is, even though we're going to look at, at how we change funding on major street projects, we still need money in the budget annually for smaller street projects. And so we'll keep that about three-hundred and. And so we'll keep that about three hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-three thousand in the budget. And then there's an additional hundred thousand in a right-of-way maintenance fund that Nick uses. And so we think that will, will help him in some smaller scale projects that come up around the city while we entertain how we want to fund some of the, the major projects moving forward. So that'll be in there. Mr. Basket, if you remember, we had a discussion about help for mistrust and HR. And so I have proposed putting that position back in the budget.
It does. Thank you.
Do what, sir?
I said, thank you.
Yes, sir. IT, when I had originally told them that we had not been able to fund the servers that we needed to do, reinforced that we needed to find a way. I think that's the nice way to say it, Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you pull your hair out?
And so those are back in there. A couple of trucks for the street department, athletic maintenance truck, another truck in the parks department. And then funding the initial architecture for the redoing of the restrooms down at the rec hall does not include the construction money yet. But it'll take, I think, some time to do that. And then we can look at how we want to fund that moving forward. A remodel of the rec hall concession area, replacement cardiac monitor for the fire department. The animal control vehicle and, and basket or box and everything, all that, it's time to be replaced again. And then one patrol vehicle and equipment. We will go ahead and show funded the two positions that we had, had budgeted as unfunded for the police department. A tractor that needed to be replaced down in the parks department. And some increase in training for the fire department as well as a sim man, mannequin that has been requested for training for the fire department. And then out at the municipal service center, trying to do some maintenance on that building and keep it in, in good working order. So some flooring and lighting upgrades out there. And then, and we will end up asking you to adopt the fee schedule here in a little bit also. But as we get there, we've talked about the stormwater fees that we did a rate model analysis on to be able to fund projects. And so after the last budget hearing, I told you we'd bring tonight, showing you with what was option one or the, the smallest proposed increase in stormwater fees that was done by the model. And so that's in the fee schedule for tonight. And that would increase the stormwater revenues by about a million dollars annually, which will then begin to give some flexibility to council to approve some stormwater projects in the community that have kind of been stacking up for many, many years that need to be addressed. This budget is built on a proposed tax rate, property tax rate of point three eight two nine, that we'll also talk about more in depth in a minute. The current rate is point three eight seven two. So it, it is a decrease. But it's also, and even though it's a decrease in the rate, it's an increase in the revenue or values coming to the city because of the rising overall valuations in the community. But that's the number that this budget was built on. And I think with that, I'd open it. Any questions from the council?
Questions for Jason.
Mr. King, I'd like to thank you for your work on this because you have worked long and hard, and I appreciate that. After having the privilege of sitting through some budget discussions in a neighboring city not too long ago, I'm amazed at how well our process works and how professional and efficient our staff is. And I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question, and it's not included in this, but I, I wonder if we have, have any opportunity in this year's budget to discuss the cost of living adjustment for our retired employees because that has been a, an issue that is an ongoing issue. And I, I don't think it's in here, but I wanted to ask you about it.
Yes, sir. No, sir, there's not a recommendation included on refunding that. It is something that we look at annually since that decision was made several years ago. And so Monica works with TMRS. And we look at many different options that, that they have out there from repeating to what they call ad hoc or one-time options. And this year, kind of a one-time option would be about a five hundred thousand dollar increase over what we currently pay into TMRS. And so, no, sir, I did not make a recommendation for that with all the, the funding of increased salaries for current employees as well as some of the other priorities mentioned by the department directors. But it would certainly be at the pleasure of the council to direct otherwise.
Well, and I, I appreciate you looking at that and that.
Yes, sir.
We, we, we need to take care of our employees because they are one of our most valuable assets, current employees. But our, our retired employees served us well also. And at some point in the future, I hope we'll be able to do something for them as well.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Hearing that on, open to the public if anybody wants to make a comment or recommendation. Okay, hearing now, then we'll, do I close the public hearing? Okay, now I'll close the public hearing at six fifty-six and consider adoption of ordinance for annual operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four oh twenty-five for our operating budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
For all of these votes on these items. Yes.
I got you. Other questions? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Place one?
Yes.
Place two?
Yes.
Place three?
Yes.
Place four?
Yes.
Place five? Place six?
Aye.
Place seven?
Yes.
Place nine? Eight?
Yes. Do I get two votes?
Sure, it doesn't matter. We had enough votes passed without checking. Just thinking. Okay, motion passes. Next is to consider ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five operating budgets presented. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we import, approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero dash twenty-six.
No, you're not there yet, sir.
Twenty-seven.
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry.
This is your, just item number seven. As I told you, the, the budget was built on a tax rate of point three eight two nine. And that that was an increase, even though it's a decrease in the rate, it's an increase in the revenue over last year. So it is an increase in tax.
So your motion is, Mr. Basket?
We're back on.
Number's item seven.
We're on seven?
Consider ratifying the property tax increase.
There we go. Sorry. Yes, I will. I promise. I'm sorry. Sarah's yelling at me.
She does me all the time. So don't, don't feel special.
Only when you deserve it.
I, I deserve it. I make the motion that we, uh, uh, ratify the property tax increase reflected in fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five annual operating budget.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? No, wait, place one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Eight? Seven? Go ahead, Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Next item is consider adoption of ordinance setting fee schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
Can I make a comment on that? Because on the storm, on that rate schedule, there was two, a proposed one and a proposed two. Would you clarify that we're going with the proposed one?
Well, what was recommended was proposed one, is that right? So it would be, we're all voting on one. Schedule one. Is that part of what you'd recommend in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I make the motion that we adopt the fee schedule proposed one of twenty twenty-four dash zero dash twenty-six.
Have a motion. I hear a second. Okay, all, we'll vote all, place one?
Yes.
Place two?
Yes.
Three? Place three?
Yes. Yes.
Place four?
Yes.
Place five? Place five? Place six?
Yes.
Place eight? Motion passes. Next, and then now we're going to enter into a public hearing on the twenty twenty-four tax rate. And I guess I'll turn that book over. I want to just make a comment. Every year, this is vast accords. It makes no sense that you had to do a tax rate after you do a budget. Because what we're doing basically is saying, we've got to have this much money to spend rather than saying, here's how much money we're going to collect. Now go spend, now here's a budget to do that. That just, my annual thing, yada, yada, yada.
Mm-hmm.
So, but that's the way the process is. So here we go.
Let's make sure to include that that's a state law requirement.
Oh, I understand that.
Not something we make the decision on.
And I just, I just have to make that comment. I have a meet with the governor tomorrow. So I will, I'll visit with him about that. Mr. King?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, as mentioned a minute ago, the budget was built off a proposed rate of point three eight two nine. That is the voter approval rate this year. So that is the, the, and it's also the amount that you approved back in August as the maximum allowable for this year. The no new revenue rate was point three six six zero. And the difference in the funds collected or the revenue collected, Monica, I lost my place. About three hundred and ten thousand dollars is the difference between the no new revenue and the voter approval rate is, is the amount. And so again, the budget was built off the point three eight two nine. So that's the recommendation from staff.
Questions for Jason. Hearing now, we'll enter a public hearing. Anybody wants to come and speak to us in favor or in opposition of proposed tax rate? Hearing now, we'll close the, close the public hearing and consider adoption of the ordinance setting tax rate for twenty twenty-four. Mr. Basket?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we move the property tax rate to be increased by adoption, I'm sorry. Move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point three eight two nine, which is effectively a four point six two percent increase in the tax rate.
Do I hear a second? Have a motion, a second. Mr. Sir, the vote, place one?
Yes.
Place two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Place six?
Yes.
Place eight?
Yes.
Motion passes. I don't know which is harder, you or you. But we got to it tonight. Appreciate it very much. Just one comment before we adjourn. Everybody, everybody up here want to say a prayer for tonight, but in your own prayers, say a prayer for Chief Harris, you know, this recovery. Everything's going well. But everybody up here is thinking of you. With that, it is seven oh three, and we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.